Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, August 16, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. If you could please stand for the break.
(inaudible)
We have staff announcements, and at this time I will start with the room. Is there any staff announcement for the room? No? Robin, you don't have any? No? Okay. Is there any staff announcement on Zoom? There are no staff announcements on Zoom. Okay. Next, we have recognition and acknowledgement. If the clerk could please read out.
Item number one is a proclamation. Adopt a proclamation recognizing August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Callaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Tuffinelli and I are on the Board of Central Sierra Child Support. And since I never received any child support, I have the honor of doing this. You weren't around when I needed you. Whereas the vision of Central Sierra Child Support Agency is partnering with families to create self-sufficiency, and whereas the professional staff of the Central Sierra Child Support Agency worked diligently to fulfill this vision by partnering with families involved in more than 4,900 cases and collecting over $12 million in the last federal fiscal year. I might point out that the agency is made up of four counties, so this wasn't just all Calaveras. Excuse me. The Central Sierra Child Support Agency declares its commitment to having a meaningful impact on the families it serves and the agencies engaged in educating its customers regarding their cases and the community regarding the services it provides. And whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency affirms the important role it plays in partnering with parents to support the well-being of children, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency encourage parents to be accountable for their children, providing them many opportunities to succeed, and whereas Child Support Awareness Month recognizes and acknowledges parents who work diligently to support their children, to provide emotional and financial stability, thus having a positive impact on their children, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency thanks its partner agencies, recognizes its child support professionals who strive to continuously improve their customer service and make a difference in the lives of the children in our community. And I would like a motion approving this proclamation. Or don't I do that? Public comment? Why? I already gave public comment.
(laughing). Is there any public comment on Zoom?
It's been a while.
There is no public comment on Zoom.
Good morning, Board. Robin Carter, Health and Human Services Agency Program Manager, oversee Eligibility and Employment Services. Our collaboration that we've had with Central Sierra Child Support since 2003, they've been in our office. It's more than a collaboration, it's a partnership. We are needed. We work very closely with them with regards to our CalWorks individuals and our Medicare or Medi-Cal individuals, excuse me. We have somebody, a support staff, Melissa Broyles, in our office two days a week. They also have a kiosk in our building which is available to anybody who wants to come in and make a child support payment, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I just want to thank the individuals that we work with at your office. We greatly appreciate it. I do want the community to know, though, it's not just clients who receive CalWorks and Medi-Cal benefits that Central Sierra Child Support works with. They work with anybody who even doesn't receive community funds or grant programs. So if anybody needs to come into our building and see anybody from Central Sierra Child Support, even if it is a day that they are not in-house, we can take some information and give it back to them. So I just want to thank you again for the collaboration and congratulations on your proclamation.
And I want to thank Health and Human Services for being partners with the agency all these years. Is there any other public comments?
Come on in.
Okay, Kim.
I'd like to thank the Board for having us today and for proclaiming August as Child Support Awareness Month.
Kim, could you just introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Kim Britt, and I'm the Deputy Director for Central Sierra Child Support Agency. And I would also like to thank Robin for coming and speaking on our behalf today. That was very, very kind. Central Sierra Child Support Agency is here to support families. As Supervisor Callaway mentioned, we cover four counties. We work with families in Calaveras, Amador, Tuolumne, and Alpine Counties. And we have a caseload of almost 5,000 cases, and we work very hard with our 25 employees, with each of our customers and families, to try to give them the child support that they deserve. Child Support Awareness Month was originated in 1995 as a way for us to celebrate the parents and their support of their children. And so we take this opportunity every year to recognize Child Support Awareness Month, to bring light to what we do, and help educate the community on the services that we do provide. And so one of the things that I wanted to mention is, so far this federal fiscal year, we've already established paternity for 21 children in Calaveras County. And establishing paternity is so important for children because it entitles them to a lot of financial as well as emotional benefits. And in addition, we've also already collected $2.8 million for families here in Calaveras County this federal fiscal year already. So the work that we do is important, and we are doing everything that we can to try to get the word out because, as Robin had mentioned earlier, our services are not just for the families that are receiving public assistance. We are here to serve and help all families in Calaveras County. So again, I want to thank you for taking the time to recognize Child Support Awareness Month this month and for the proclamation that you just read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tuffinelli, did you want to say anything or make a motion?
Do I want to say anything?
I mean, you're with me on their board.
I am with you on the board, and I'm going to thank you. You're newly appointed, she's just got there, and you're doing a great job so far. It's a great organization, it really is. It's run very, very well, and it does a great job. I think we're always, there's, we're always in the top 10. I think last year, you were like the top five as far as collections, or top three?
Top three.
Top three last year. We're always up at the top, or at least in the top 10, sometimes top five. Last year was three. So it's well-run, it does a great job, and I'm just happy to be part of it for the number of years that we've been on it. It's great.
Okay. Do I need a motion?
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore, they proclaim that the Board of Supervisors, the county of Calaveras, state of California, in case you didn't know where Calaveras was, does hereby designate the month of August 2022 to be declared Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras, and applauds the Central Sierra Child Support Agency for its continuous service to families throughout our community. Thank you very much, Kim. Eric?
I'm going to come down.
I can come down.
Come on down.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Next, we move on to general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter that is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. Is there any public comment on Zoom? There is no public comment online. Okay, we'll move it to the room. Is there any public comment for any item not on the agenda? She and none will move on to the next items. Next is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any Board member that wishes to pull an item from consent? Do you hear none? I'll move it to the public comment. Is there any Zoom public comment?
There is not.
Is there any staff or public in the room that wishes to pull an item from consent? She and none, I'll move it back to the Board. At this time, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll move this item, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Next, we'll move on to regular agenda item number nine. At this time, I will turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item number nine is a resolution to adopt Craig Pedro as interim county administrative officer and authorizing the Board Chair to sign the employment agreement.
I'm going to turn, yep, go ahead, Judy.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm very pleased to bring you a resolution appointing Craig Pedro as the interim CAO. We're excited he was willing to come out of the fun of his retirement to assist us in the continuity of operations and assisting us with finding our next CAO.
Thank you. I'll bring it to the Board. Is there any comment from the Board?
Thank you.
I too echo what Judy said.
You do.
Go ahead.
That's it?
No, I echo what Judy said. Thank you, Craig, for coming out of retirement and coming to Calaveras. We're really excited to have you here.
So is Marcos.
And with that, thank you, Marcos, for everything that you have done over the last period of time. We all really appreciate it, and I'm sure staff appreciate it as well.
We do, and as a matter of optics, please don't run out too quickly.
We do, Marcos, and thank you very much for everything you did. You did a great job, and your staff did a good job, too.
Rita?
It really is an honor to have Craig, excuse me, our future CAO interim with us. I've had the opportunity to work with him over the years. He's well-respected by the CAOs in this state and his former staff in the residents of Tuolumne. So I know we all look forward to working with you. We're just drawing tickets, who's going to be in your office first. Thank you for coming.
Is there any public comment? Is there any Zoom?
There is no public comment.
I'll give the opportunity, if Craig wants to say anything, you don't have to, but I just want to make sure.
Can you go over your mic, someone?
That's a little red light once it comes on.
There we go. All right. I've got accustomed to this. I just wanted to, you know, first, thank you guys for extending your trust in me, especially guys three and a half years rusty. I do want to let you know, I got special permission, as you guys know, from five grandchildren who are concerned their grandpa was moving out of the county. But I said, no, I'm just going to be driving over and helping some folks and coming back. You'll see me, you'll still see grandpa around. But you know, that's near and dear to my heart, and that's something I just want to convey for people that, you know, might be listening, is that I wouldn't do this for just anybody, but I've known and worked with Calaveras County professionally for 34 years and known every CAO that's been here, and have a lot of friends and family that have been in and out of this community as well. And I wouldn't do this just for anyone. So we're going to partner up, and while my time will be brief, as we've discussed, I hope it'll be meaningful. So thank you, I'm honored by your trust.
Thank you. With that, I'll move it back to the Board. Is there a motion?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
So move.
Is there a second?
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Judy, is there anything else?
I'm going to sit here and watch you. Chair has decided contract yet. Sorry, Marcos.
Okay, next up, we've got public work, so we're going to take a couple, what, five minutes to get set up? So can we take a five-minute break so they can get set up here? Thank you.
Ms. Callaway?
Thank you and welcome back. We will now move on to regular agenda number 10. If the clerk could please read out.
Item number 10 is informational item from Public Works. Receive a presentation from the Department of Public Works related to the status of capital improvement and road maintenance projects.
Good morning.
The subtitle for this presentation should actually be how we handle the call for projects. There's a call for projects that's just come out from our Council of Governments, and there's a priority list that we must provide, and that will be the culmination of this discussion. So, the call for projects. So we'll briefly go over these topics, always focused on how we set the priority for the The, as you can see, the last items there are the focus for the call for projects, but we're going to talk about the types of projects and how we fund these projects, and we'll briefly discuss the capital improvement program because that is a formal presentation that we do around December, January timeframe with the Board. Okay. So the types of projects. We do, of course, the routine maintenance of our road system throughout the county. This, this will be one area that we deal with that's driven, you can say, mostly by input from our, the residents who let us know what's going on out there on the roads. We have our capital maintenance projects. We have road improvement projects that are in the capital program, and we have our bridge replacement rehabilitation program focused mostly only on the bridges that we have in the county. Project funding, Mark, please.
Good morning. With project funding for routine maintenance, we have a few different funding sources. We have state funding, which is state taxes, highway user taxes, et cetera. There are a number of different HUDA accounts that are funded in a number of different ways, but all are specifically for road maintenance activities. There is county funding, which comes to us through TOT and some general fund dollars. Both of those make up the SB1 Maintenance of Effort, which is a total of $624,000 and change annually. So those funds we receive in order for us to receive SB1 funds from the state. We also have federal funds for a handful of maintenance projects, which include RSTP, which is the Regional Surface Transportation Program. We have some coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations, which are a temporary funding, one-time funding that we were allocated in 2021. And we have some funds that we receive for the Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program.
So how we establish what we do on our routine maintenance. A few years ago, Josh Pack, our previous director, set up the Mike Calaveras Online Reporting System. Part to that, it was just driven by phone calls that we received from the residents to let us know whether there are issues on our road system. Our road crews also, as they do their daily work, identify areas that need some maintenance. And the types of things that we do as far as the routine maintenance, the pothole patching, crack sealing, you can see the list, and included on that type of category would be also the snow removal that we do in the wintertime. Well, there's, there's so much more to that list, but you could imagine, there's just so many things our road crews are always taking care of out there. There's drainage issues, and it just goes on. So the way we fund the projects that are in the capital improvement program, those projects come from, for the most part, there's federal funding, there's state funding, COG funding. That type of funding is pretty restricted to the project that we're doing. In other words, if there's any, if there are any funds left over on a project within this category, it's not a simple thing for us to take that money and put it on another project. There's a long process that we would have to go through. They make sure, I say they, the state or whoever is providing the funding, the funding for the program, makes sure that we stick to the scope of work. We have to deliver that scope of work. So, for example, highway bridge program, we could only use those funds on each particular bridge that we're working on. We have the SB1 funding. We have to supply a list, yearly list, to the state, letting them know what are the areas that we're working on, and so forth. So currently, brand new things that we have, Clean California Grant Project, we're putting some wayfinding signs up and some entrance features to the communities throughout the county. That's a state-funded program. We have the Active Transportation Program that was a program, a grant application that we just submitted about a month or so ago, and on that grant application, we asked for funding for improvements to Polk Street leading between the Government Center to the San Andres Elementary School. We also asked for some improvements on Highway 4 to connect to the elementary school there on Pennsylvania Gulch. So now we have the COG funding that's going to be coming to us through this call for projects, and the main categories of funding that they're making available to us are the CMAC and RSTP funding. There you can see, it's just a breakdown of the projects that we're working on with the different fund types. We have quite a bit of different funding sources, as you can see, for the Wagon Trail Project. Okay. All right. Now, the capital improvement program, as I said, that's a program that we come and make a formal presentation to you in December and January. That is a five-year program. We have, we're kind of in the middle of a, of this five-year program that was started when Josh Pack was here. So those projects have already been set in motion during the pipeline. When Josh Pack set that in motion, he spoke to you about keeping work within certain geographic areas together so that we have an economy of scale. And as we go around the county, we're working on different areas, different projects. So we started down, we did District 5 projects, we did some CSA work, we're moving over to Copperopolis, we're going up to the Murphy's area, then Arnold area. We're already making plans for the work that's, program for the Milk Hill area. When that plan was approved years ago, the lists of roads just said various, so now we're doing our work, doing the pavement management analysis and coming up with strategies to work on the roads that give us the best value for our money. Once that's done, we're also going to be working on the roads in Santa Clara. So that's a pattern that was already set before, and it's the pattern that we're going to continue, otherwise something will get out of place. So for the CIP funds, the capital improvement projects, we use a very small portion of the funding from our discretionary funds. Those are unrestricted funds, but the type of work that we do there, it's the countywide striping program, and it's going to be the funding that I intend to use for a new program that I'd like to implement, and that's a traffic calming program. Most of the funds under the capital improvement program are restricted funds. We could only use those for the project that we set and stick to that scope of work that we're submitting. So then, this is something we've spoken about in the past, but we, how do we select these So we have a pavement, a pavement management system that, a facility that was done a couple of years ago to look at all the condition of our, of our roads. The idea being that we're going to spend funding on our roads that can benefit from some treatment. A road that's in a very poor condition will take a lot of money to, to bring up to a decent condition, and we've sunk maybe a whole year's worth of work of funds into one road. So what was done was, instead of just putting all of our money into one road, we've tried to take care of all the roads before they get to a very poor condition. And so then more miles of roads can be taken care of. Other things that we do, we look at our Mike Calaveras system, and there are trends that we can see the residents will be telling us, we'll get maybe complaints on one particular area, and we will try to focus on that area. So that helps, that guides us to areas, problem areas that we have. Of course, we try to, because the funds are limited, we try to take care of roads that carry the most amount of traffic, and those are the major and minor collectors. We also focus on safety. Safety is something that's in the background of everything here that we talk about. Issues that have safe, safety problems always are a priority for us. Issues that have safe, safety problems always are a priority for us. So. Okay, thank you. In that regard, I was speaking with our team in regards to how we handle some issues that we know are come to us. All of you have spoken to me about needs that you have in your districts. For example, on Gardner, and we have Double Springs, we have Main Street in Copperopolis in front of the Armory. We have that little Main Street in Moke Hill. And we have Murphy's, right where Murphy's Grade Road, as they enter into the community of Murphy's, the speeding that happens. So these are projects where maybe we don't have accident history developed, but we know by the input that you've given us and also by the input of the residents, that there's a potential problem here that we don't want to wait until the accident happens to, and we start generating that accident history. We'd like to be able to tackle some of these issues. And so if we could set aside some funds on a yearly basis that we can take care of some of these spots, and then, so we took care of that this year. Next year, we'll do another group of areas, at least something in each district, because every district has a need. We're looking at things that don't cost a tremendous amount of money where we, you know, something that we need grant funds for or something like that. So the types of things that we're looking at here, signage, perhaps lit cross, lit signs to let people know that they're going to cross. Maybe we put some speed tables in here, some, it could be any number of things so that we can address the problem. So that's the hope with this, this thing that we'd like to create and offer to you. This would not be something that we apply funding for. It would be coming from our discretionary funds. Okay. So then, we're at the, we are now at the end of the cycle for the Call for Project, the last Call for Projects, the new one is coming up. So I'd like to turn this over to Kelly.
Okay, the moment you've been waiting for, right? So we're coming up on the Call for Projects and working with the Calaveras Council of Governments to establish for us what list we want to put forward with, to work with them on tapping into these funding sources that they have. So I don't know if you're aware, but there are two funding sources that we work with the COG for our projects. And those two sources are CMAC, which is congestion mitigation air quality funding. Those funds are on my next slide, so I'll just skip to that if that's okay. Those funds are basically to reduce ozone knocks and all the different emissions that take place from us just running our cars. And what the federal government is looking for us to do, and the state as well, because they work in partnership for the funding, is to reduce all of those levels. And by doing these different projects, which encourage biking, you'll see the whole list, the eligible projects. They really want us to encourage transit improvements, bike and ped facilities, even just doing public outreach with those dollars is the different types of projects. So what we're doing right now, as we get ready to submit the applications, is we're coming up with a list of projects that we think are, we, it's kind of a complicated situation in that we don't want to just look at projects that will meet this funding requirement, but projects that the county needs that may meet these funding requirements. And what we've talked to the executive director at the COG, and she's told us, submit your projects regardless of whether or not you think they would meet these funding requirements. And we'll analyze it and we'll determine whether or not we can make that work. So it's a really great partnership we have with the Council of Governments, and we're going to continue to evaluate those projects, not really focusing so much on the funding, but more on, you know, the quality of the project that we can deliver for the residents. So it's kind of a new way of thinking about it. We've always kind of in the past been focused on, okay, we need to make sure that this project will give us this funding outcome, we'll be able to get those dollars. And it's more about, well, maybe we could add bike lanes to a project that normally we wouldn't have thought about, and get some paving done on a big stretch of road that maybe we hadn't thought of before. So it's a new, it's a new, it's a new way of looking at it. And I think that's great with a new executive director bringing those ideas to us. The other funding source is a very flexible funding source, as you can see from the slide. Eligible projects, roads and highways, bridges, and that's the RSTP funding that will be available in this Call for Projects.
All right. So the Call for Projects, draft presentation was made by the Council of Governments a couple of weeks ago. The, we have the submittal date, October 12. Prior to that date, we need to come back to the Board of Supervisors with the list of projects and a resolution that would support those projects. As we prepare these, the projects for submittal, we look at these various items. We still kind of take a look at funding eligibility requirements. We have to make sure that the scope of work matches what the program's going to be as, to some extent. In the end, it's going to be the Council of Governments that's going to decide how the funds will be distributed, what program, what funding source will be used for the project that we submit. So those are the, some of the items that we look at. But of course, the big one, the overarching one that's always on our mind is safety. If there's a safety issue that we need to solve, we submit, we develop that project and we submit that as part of our list. This is kind of a preview here for where we're at with some of these projects that we have developed with the Council of Governments. Of course, the Wagon Trail Project is the big one. There's Phase Two PE that's right upon us now. We'll be coming back to the board with the contract for that. But something that's been in the pipeline that's moving on to construction is the Valley Springs School Improvement Program. That project, there was a planning study that was completed a few years before the project started. It's the Valley Springs Town Center Connection Connectivity Plan. That project was identified there as one of the key things that was needed. We've moved ahead with the project design. Right now, we will be completing the design for the project, so we're moving to a construction-ready, shovel-ready project. That's always an attractive thing for these grant programs because everyone likes to see a physical reality to a project. In this case, what we intend to propose for submittal for the Call for Projects would be for the construction funding for that project. Another project that's also in the pipeline, but it's not as further along as the Valley Springs School, is the State Route 26 Garner Olive Orchard Intersection. That one is in preliminary engineering. There's a lot of work still that needs to be done with Caltrans. We're not close to construction on that one. So we can't say that getting grant funding for that would leave us with something on the ground. Nevertheless, we have a pretty good compelling reason to be pushing that along, and that's the safety of the intersection. Kelly, you want to?
We've just been reviewing some of the data regarding the accident history on that location. And it's like over a 10-year period, there's a history of rear ending, side swipes, broadside accidents. And I think just a week and a half ago, there was a pretty substantial accident. So I think working with Caltrans, we can make a good argument to, for them to partner with us on the improvements on that road, because it isn't our roadway. We have to work with them, so it's a state highway, so.
Right. Okay. So now comes, those are, that's a preview of the projects that we'd like to submit, we'll be working on, looking for other projects that may be eligible to submit. There is a timely use of funds policy that is part of this grant application. So we need to be aware of that so that we tackle projects that we know that we can deliver within the timeframes that they have set up. So that coupled with looking at safety, accident history throughout different areas of the county. We could, these are projects that were just submitted last about a month or so ago. But within those planning documents, there are other things that are mentioned in there that we probably can take a look at. And we'll evaluate those and bring, bring the, bring the list back to you for your review and approval so we could get the applications in. The applications are due October 12. We hope to bring the list back to you October 11. The 11th is a Board of Supervisors date. All right. Are there questions?
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kelly. At this time, we'll bring it back to the board for any questions. It looks like Supervisor Coway has a question.
Could you please explain to me the MOE for SB one funding?
Sure. Sorry. So there is, in order for us to receive the SB one funding, we have to, the county has to have a Maintenance of Effort match. And so basically, what that is, is they took an average of the general fund contribution to Public Works Departments statewide. I believe it was from like 910 through 1112. It was a three-year period, and we took the average. And the reason the state did that is they didn't want counties to supplant SB one funding for general fund dollars. So they basically said, we want to expand road maintenance. We don't want counties to take away what they had been contributing because now the departments of Public Works have SB one funding. So they required us to submit what our general fund contribution was for those three years. Ours was $624,000 and some change. So in order to meet that MOE, the county gives us some TOT, and anything above and beyond that, we get matched in general fund dollars. However, regardless of, you know, what happens with TOT, whether it exceeds the amount, you know, if it goes over the 25%, we don't receive that. We're capped at that maximum amount of 624,000.
So what doesn't come from TOT comes from the allocation from property tax?
Correct.
And that, we need that match to get more of the SB one funds?
Yes. If we didn't, if we did not receive the MOE match, the state would not provide us SB one dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, this year, the TOT 25% share exceeds that, so we're not drawing on the property taxes coming in at this time.
If that's, if that's the way that the revenue is received, that would be correct. However, if the 25% that we, you know, the way that it's allocated is the Department of Public Works is supposed to get the 25%. But if it, if the 25% exceeds that 624 for the MOE, we do not receive that.
Oh, really?
We only receive the base amount.
Okay.
We don't get any growth.
I'm just curious. I wasn't worried about it.
Yeah, we don't receive any growth.
Comfortably, we can be sure that the money's not being used for snow removal in District Three.
The majority of, the majority of snow removal dollars are coming out of HUDA, out of our road maintenance.
I know, I know. I just had to give that to Ms. Coway.
Can I just follow up on Ben's question? So if we allocate 25%, let's say, TOT is $2 million. We allocate 25%, you're getting $500,000. Or let's just, let's double it. Let's say you're getting a million, it's $4 million. And you're only going, even though we allocate 25% of that to Public Works, Public Works only receives that $600,000, even though what happens out of the $400,000? Because I was under the assumption that all of that was going to Public Works.
I'm unsure. We only receive the minimum amount allowable by law through the SB one, through the MOE. So if there's an increase, we do not receive that increase.
I'm not sure that's the intent of the board.
That was, that was established by CIO Lutz a number of years ago.
I think this, I think the issue here, if I may, Mr. Garamendi?
Please.
Is this is the first year we may, you know, once, seeing the final budget here in September, the actuals, this is the first year that we'll see exceed said number. And at this time, you know, we've never, we've never crossed this bridge before. So now, now we'll have a discussion on if it's $750,000 or $800,000, then we'll have a discussion on what our decision is to do with that, which is, yeah.
Right now, how does it sit currently?
Currently, in the budget, we have $627,184 going to roads.
Is that, is that 25%?
In this year's budget, we are anticipating a little more than that $627 per department for the 25% mark.
And in the current budget, as it stands, it'll be going to Public Works?
It is not set to go to Public Works. Here at final budget, we're going to true up that number, so we'll know exactly, and we'll talk about the difference on where that's going to go.
Okay, yeah, I would like to have that discussion about the intention, because it's certainly my intention, my understanding was that the delta would go to Public Works for roads, but that's a board decision.
Kay, do you have any questions? I have a bunch.
No, I just have a couple of comments. We went back to what CMAC funding could be used for. And we went over quite a few things that it can be used for. But it can also be used for charging stations, if we ever get to the point that we need, that's, it's specifically meant for those type of things, too. So, and as we go into the future, we'd be looking at putting charging stations in different areas. So we can use that money for that. Other than that, I think my questions are answered on some of the other ones that I had written here. So that was the TOT and the CMAC. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You're not done yet. Thank you for the presentation. It was good. One thing, Robert, on your comment about bringing back the Call for Projects, October 11, I think it might be best to bring it back sooner, if that is the appetite of the board. I think it's going to be more than a one-day conversation. Especially after seeing the presentation, I think we're all digesting. And then with the final budget numbers, we might be taking a different look at that. So is that something that the board has an appetite to bring back? Doesn't mean we need to make a decision that day, but at least have a conversation. So we're not shortening ourselves and rushing the day before the Call for Projects to do for COG. Because we will, and one thing that wasn't mentioned in the presentation, we will be, I don't want to use the word competing, but we will be having to look at projects that the city submits as well. So I want to make sure that we have a high caliber option to submit to the COG from the county. And then the, I guess this might now get answered with budget, but going back to the CIP traffic calming slide, I like the innovative idea of that. My only concern is the competing of the normal CIP project. And our, some of these, rather than doing one-off solutions, and I know one of, my district is one of the many that I keep bugging you guys about, but more of a long-term solution, rather than short-term solution, to look into those CIP traffic calming ideas. Is it more, we need to invest in the planning of the, of those streets? Because I'd rather see an investment in the planning for a long-term solution than like one-off. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. But I would rather invest your time and county dollars into a long-term solution than a short-term solution. So it's not competing with the normal all-year CIPs, because I know we are a little bit behind on some of that. But thank you for bringing in consent today. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Fandorf? I was just, I was going to add to what you were saying. We were kind of evaluating whether, uh, the, the traffic calming program would be something that rose to the, uh, level of a CIP. And our thought process was, we know, we have a good idea of, of several locations throughout the county, um, that wouldn't necessarily ever rise to the level of a CIP project. So, in, in, in terms of being able to address that immediate problem, for instance, the, the Armory we talked about, well, we don't wanna just plop a, a crosswalk in there without it being supported by other things. So, this funding, which would be just not a huge amount, but just something that we've kind of, you know, walled off for that project every year, for Supervisor Gueramendi, we know we have a problem on Main Street. We need to do something about that. We have an idea of what the solution is. It's just kind of, it's just really a very, um, targeted approach in that regard, and not to say that we don't have bigger issues on those roads that do need to be addressed, but I think even if they were a larger project, we could still do this work and kind of alleviate that issue. Speeding is gonna happen. I mean, Hartvixen, every day we hear, uh, Berkasy, we hear every day, people are speeding. If we do just a small amount of calming, putting up some more signs, not really spending a lot of money, but really targeting those efforts, I think that we can come up with some, you know, we can get a little bit of a better response. That is the hope.
We'd like to put a little bit aside in the budget, let's say, so that we know that it's always there for that. Otherwise, it will always be gobbled up by materials and other things.
Okay. Okay. Well, we could, we, um, I look forward to seeing how this will evolve into something positive. Do you have something?
Yeah, I, I do, and I wanna go back on some of my questions here. Robert, I, I know it was a part of this conversation, but there are two bridges that were destroyed here recently, one here in San Andreas and one out on Milton Road. Is, is there funding, part of our funding is being diverted to fix those bridges here sometime in the near future before we have some other kind of disaster happen because of it?
I wouldn't consider it a diversion of funds. It's always our world maintenance funds that takes care of the, um,
There's a lot of work.
Those things that are matched, you know, during the course of the year.
And one of Milton Road won't cost, I mean, it's, it's gonna cost, but the one here in San Andreas is gonna be a pretty big sum to get that thing fixed. So, I just wanna make sure we're headed in a direction, because it could cause other problems coming on winter.
Right. We are always looking at that, uh, funding source, working with the budget. Mark keeps a very close eye on all of that. And of course, when the fiscal year ends, maybe we need to, um, not buy, we might need to buy a little bit less materials or make some adjustments. We also will come back to you mid-year, um, and make adjustments there. So, we're constantly looking to see, um, the impact that some of the work that we have, uh, has on our budget.
And the other couple of questions I have is the Valley Spring School Improvement Program. Um, you're moving into PSE right now?
Yes.
Do you have a, a finish date, when we'll have a shovel-ready project? I mean, I wanna go out and start looking for funding now, um, and there's some, I mean, I addressed this at COG, because it started at COG, um, this program. Um, I, I think it could probably fit CMAC funds, uh, for some of that, just because of, of taking vehicles off the road. I mean, it may be somewhat of a sell, but I, I, I wanna look for funding, but I wanna know what date, somewhere close to when I will have that completed, the engineering part of it completed.
I will give you a, a schedule for when that's due. Um, right now, we are, we just entered into the agreement with the design engineer to complete that work, so that's just happening now. They're at, I believe what they've done is the 35% design, so they need to finish that design, which is-
Now, please keep me updated and when you get some close to being finished, so I can go into the mode of I have a shovel-ready project.
As far as how, what program you will be used for funding the project, that as part of the council of governments, you will be having those discussions.
Yeah. And then the other one was the Pope Street project. You hear ATP applications submitted for Pope Street. Have, have they been submitted or are they prepared for submission?
They were submitted.
They have been already, because we had talked and it hadn't quite been, the timeframe was coming up, but we met the timeframe?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That was done, uh, that was last month.
Yeah, it was last month. So, let, let me know on that, when you hear back, whether we've met the requirements and been awarded that.
We've inquired and haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Supervisor Gueramendi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Public Works, for the presentation. Always very informative. Really appreciate the, uh, the, the traffic calming ideas. Um, every, every district as you meet, uh, there's a lot of different ways to traffic calm, sidewalks, which I don't have any, uh, to, to, to speed tables, and, uh, and I, I look forward to finding ways that we can do it together. It also helps to know that this can be a regular program, so that we don't have to do it one-up, and we could continually move forward and check off those spots, because every district has its own issues, and it's better to get in front of safety issues than have to deal with somebody's injury and then go back and fix it afterwards. So, I appreciate that. I also wanna give a compliment to your road crews. Um, uh, seven years ago, or six years ago, I started this job, the calls are constant, and our roads have improved dramatically. And your team is very responsive to the online system, which is a great place for a supervisor to send someone to get a photo up and get it in the system. It allows us to track also what your progress is on filling that puddle. So, I appreciate the work of your road crews and the systems that are supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, Supervisor Stoppa?
We'll have to be innovative, and with the way this California state law works, with, especially like in my district, rural residential has a rural designation, you have to go through quite the process to be able to cross that line, to be able to put up signs. We all know that people ignore signs, and there's no way they're gonna let me put up spiked strips in my, my district legally. So, um, you know, I appreciate, you know, go, going through the process. Right, right now, we're trying to extrapolate the data for Garner, Garner Road and, I mean, and there's a high response from people in that area, so it isn't just me coming in and saying, "Hey, can you do this for Garner Road?" You know, the people on Garner Street has spoken quite frequently out loud, whether it be on social media or not. And, uh, you know, I appreciate you all going through the process on that. I hear what Ms. Fandorf has to say, you know, may, maybe setting up something as a policy on how we're gonna proceed in the future on traffic calming. But Mr. Gueramendi also has a point, you know, how, how do, how do you do that when each area has its differences and way, and the solutions aren't all the same? Um, our five-year program, uh, you know, we had a specific list. I know earlier we were talking about various roads, but we had a list that set benchmarks of, you know, as we get in, as you spoke, December, you know, is, you know, pretty close to a regular date that we've, uh, visited this in the past. Um, when you bring that forward, I'd like to see the benchmarks and what, now that we've been through two to three solid years, um, going through this, where are we looking at in the future past that five-year program? You know, um, I, I look forward to seeing that and, uh, you know, getting more specific on where we're going, so we can set those benchmarks for the future. Um, you know, I know, I know Mr. Toffnelli's kinda dealt with some of the same things as me with our districts, because we're right on the border of, I'll use Vista del Lago, you know, something that's on the list, something that's held up by construction being done by, by PGNI, you know, um, what are we looking at for a timeline like, on something like that, you know? And that's understandable setback for our benchmarks and everything. Also, uh, Hartvixen, which, you know, still touches both our districts, uh, and Baldwin, you know, the, and, you know, um, how we're working with our other agencies within the county that have worked, their own capital improvement projects going and everything, and what's our setback on those timelines? Because those are things that have been on our list, there's money allocated for it, and I'll be interested to see all that as we move forward. Thank you.
Are there any other Supervisor comment? I have a follow-up to Ben. Um, something that was mentioned at the COG meeting by Caltrans is Caltrans will be adding, um, outside of what Supervisor Gueramendi has been working on, additional broadband. So, with future road projects, like Supervisor Stoppa is saying, um, keeping an eye on where maybe Caltrans is gonna put that investment, so we're not working on roads only to have them dig back up for broadband. So, just something to be on the radar. Um, I think we're still waiting to see how we can collaborate with Caltrans on what those particular roads, um, data routes will be for that infrastructure.
Yeah, they were very open here in San Andreas and St. Charles Street, um, when we brought it up, broadband or any other utilities going through there before they cover it up, and, because we don't want it dug up, we want it to last for years without somebody having to trench over it, down through it, so, they were very open to it.
Thank you. If there's no other Supervisor comment, I believe I still need to do public comment. So, is there any public comment in the audience? Hi, Ralph. Come on up.
Not Ralph. Where you been, Ralph?
So, be mindful of the light. You know the, the light, the time?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, we're on. Um, real quick, uh, thank you very much, Robert, for that presentation. It's great to see Copperopolis, uh, at the forefront, leading the way in improving our county. Hopefully, you'll be set a fine example for the other district.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll give you your time, Ralph, but we already did down-
We could hit our time. Okay. I would like to see the effort that we put into the wagon trail, put into the bridge on the Burn Ferry. Uh, the wagon trail was all us, the bridge is also to Alome County. So, I'd like to see that effort, be it two years, five years, 10 years, I'd like to see the accumulation of monies, grants, and so forth, set aside to repair that bridge. Um, regarding TOT taxes, I'd like to, uh, ask Robert in Public Works, Lakeshore Court, where I live, is a small cul-de-sac, but we have four rentals, short-term rentals out of six homes on that street. So, my block is definitely paying into the TOT taxes, and we are, and they are putting a strain on our infrastructure, and that's shown, uh, by, uh, the recent, uh, project bidding CCWD with the sewer pump station replacements. Uh, so, um, you know, just if you have some extra asphalt laying around after all your work in copper, come down to Lakeshore Court and, uh, make it pretty. Um, I'd like to also thank our, my supervisor, uh, Fandorf, uh, for leading the way, uh, in, uh, getting this work done and, uh, being our advocate. It's been a pleasure, uh, working with her these, uh, this past year and change, and a pleasure working with all this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there any other public comment in the room? Uh, she and none, I'm going to move it to the room. Is there any public comment on the room?
There is no public comment.
Okay. She and none, uh, bring it back. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. This is an informational, oh, oh, sorry, Robert. Yes.
So, let me ask, uh, we'll, we'll be coming back in a few weeks with the projects. Do you want a, um, a study session item at that time, just a presentation, or would you want the resolution at that time?
Uh, what, are you talking about call for project?
Yes.
I think I'm gonna defer to how you work with the administrative office on what is the timeline on that, because I know we have some other workshops and other items coming down the pipe, so why don't we see what the workload is for admin to collaborate with public works? And then you guys can decide at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Can, can I just bring up, I, I'd like to see it after final budget, so we know we're at final budget and make some adjustments if we have to.
Okay. It'll also allow us to another meeting with the COG, so if there's any other information at the COG, because we'll have the first meeting in September. So, I, I think there's some, some benchmarks that, uh, Public Works and Admin can work with to bring their most information back to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so, I'm gonna give it a few seconds for them to walk out here.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Supervisor announcements. At this time, I'll start to my left, Supervisor Calaway.
Nothing to report.
Gueramendi?
Oh, yeah, tomorrow I'll be attending Golden State-
Mike?
Sorry? Oh, yeah, tomorrow I'll be attending the Golden State Financial Authorities, a special meeting on finance, Golden State Financial Authority General Meeting, Golden State, chairing Golden State Connect Authority Meeting, and RCRC in Sacramento. So, it'll be a full in.
Bye, Chair.
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Stoppa?
Last week, we, uh, had the, uh, we met with Integrated Waste, with the Solid Waste Task Force for the first time in a long time. We have a quorum now. Um, we're proceeding, we're, we, uh, will be moving into another meeting here very, very soon, um, and I look forward to the continued collaboration with the, with the public and our, and all our, uh, and all our different people across the county as we move forward with, uh, the landfill. Also, uh, we have a special meeting with Central Sierra Economic Development District, uh, this Thursday. Um, we'll be addressing a lot of issues. We've talked about SURF and everything else that's come down the pipeline, so, uh, you know, we'll be addressing those, and hopefully, uh, we can bring some more updates to the board sooner than later as all these different funds are proceeding. Um, also, uh, we have, um, a lot of the broadband things moving forward. I look forward to hopefully meeting with, uh, Jack and Stan tomorrow and the rest, rest of the people in the county that are collaborating together, uh, and, you know, see, seeing how our, uh, grant, grant applications are going through. Um, there's, there's a lot of moving parts going forward, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I attended the annual Fandoro Dinner this weekend. Um, this was the first time that the Fandoro opened it up to, um, the public. Um, it was really great. It was up at Bike Station this year. Um, I believe we have DSA meetings this week. Um, so, conversations are still going, and Julia is working her way through those. Um, hopefully, we'll have an update for the board in the near future. And then, next week, I have to piggyback on Stoppa's, um, comments about Integrated Waste. I have a meeting with, um, county staff and the City of Angels to discuss, uh, Integrated Waste, as they are one of the partners on the task force. So, um, and that is all I have. If there isn't anything else, at this time, I'm gonna move it over to the clerk, so she can report out last closed session and then read out this closed session.
Report out of closed session for August 9th. Item number one pursuant to government code section 54956 dot 9D1, conference legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 18CV42976. There was no reportable action taken. Item number two, public employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1 title, interim county administrative officer, there was no reportable action taken. Item number three pursuant to government code section 54957 dot 6, count, conference with county designated labor negotiator Marcus Munoz regarding the following employee organizations: service employees, International Union SEIU, local 1021 Sheriff's Management Union SMU, Calaveras County Public Safeties Employee, Safety Employees Association CCBSEA, Deputy Sheriff's Association DSA, Calaveras County, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisor Union- Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees, there was no reportable action taken. Closed session items from today's agenda. Item number eleven pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine D one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Subbasin Sustainability Plan et al., Stanislaus County Superior Court case number CV dash two-zero dash zero-zero-one-seven-two-zero. Item number twelve pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine D two, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item number thirteen pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine D two, conference legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item number fourteen pursuant to government code section 54956 dot eight, conference with real property negotiator Marcus Munoz regarding potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN number zero-four-two dash zero-one-five dash zero-three-two, negotiating party Jim Harryford. Item number fifteen pursuant to government code section 54957 dot six, conference with county designated labor negotiators Craig Pedro and Marcus Munoz regarding the following employee organizations: service employees international union SEIU, local ten-twenty-one sheriff's management union SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association CCP E A, Deputy Sheriff's Association DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, that was a lot.
Yeah.
So with that, is there any public comment?
No public comment online.
Any public comment for closed session in the room? She and Nun will bring it back, we will convene into closed session, and we'll see everyone next week. Thank you.